All right.
All right.
We have returned to open session.
Uh, we have returned to open session.
At this time, are there any, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay, thanks. And at this time, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Do we have to write new role call? Did we do that?
No.
No, do we do, did we do it?
I think we already did.
Yeah, we did it at 6:30, yes.
Um, all right, then thank you, Dan. I just want to continue to update the board and the community on our hybrid learning plan and our return to learn plan. Essentially, it's a COVID-19 update in our most unusual school year ever. As you all know, the students that are in hybrid return to school on January 4th, and I'm very appreciative of parents who certainly made great efforts to stay safe during the holiday break and our staff as well. And it does feel nice to have the children back, and it seems like we really just came right back into a routine, and so we are back. We are already contemplating the trimester shift that will be coming up in the first week in March, so starting next week, we'll be reaching out to families again and providing the opportunity for families that are in remote who might be interested in coming back to hybrid for the third trimester to indicate that request. We've always allowed families that are hybrid to go to remote at any time if that's something that they were interested in, but we will be surveying for all of that, but really most importantly, understanding about students that may be coming back into our hybrid program. At trimester two, we had almost no change. We had a few children come back to hybrid and a few children go to remote, and it was kind of just a, it had no impact on personnel or staffing at all. So it's harder to predict with trimester three. I do wonder with staff vaccines on the horizon, better weather, potentially more outdoor opportunities if more families may decide to return to school. And we certainly welcome anybody back who's interested in being back. I know families are also starting to ask about added time. Might we be modifying our schedule for more time? We are looking at the Wednesday at Hauser, so for people, I think you all understand the middle school schedule, there's a group that comes Monday, Tuesday, and there's another group that comes Thursday, Friday, that alternating might be the, you know, choose an alternating Wednesday for that group of children, something we would likely do at the trimester shift also. The elementary schedule is more challenging around how it's built, and I think it would be a real challenge to add time right now, but it's certainly something that we're keeping an eye on and looking optimistically toward certainly next school year. And already, our mind has shifted to next school year in terms of our planning. We are, you know, none of us unfortunately have the crystal ball that we all wish we had around COVID, hoping that we'll be able to return to school in a more normal, all-enrolled kind of way. It's really for us and for many, many school districts, as you know, it's the social distancing requirements that really are fairly determinate in our, in our planning, that that is what has really put us in a position of the smaller class sizes and therefore then the modified schedules, particularly at the elementary level. So we'll see, we'll see if, you know, the social distancing requirements might get modified over time. We'll be listening carefully for that. I think we all kind of anticipate and wonder if we will be wearing masks for a really long time, but we know the mask wearing part has really not been the challenge for our students. Our students have really done incredibly well with that. So keeping an eye on all of those things. Also starting to think about summer school, and we will probably be having summer school at Ames. Hauser and Central, we do anticipate will probably be doing the sprinkler project, and that's going to make it off limits, at least for a good chunk of the summer. So nicely, Ames has nice space and a beautiful playground, and I think it would work out well for our summer school programming. We are just now beginning to sort of contemplate and plan for any kind of intensified, you know, learning programs for children as, you know, we certainly know that some families, perhaps more than others, certainly perhaps some subject areas more than others, have been impacted by the remote learning and just by the pandemic in general. So more to follow on all those things, but just kind of wanted to share with all of you that those are things that are kind of in active planning stages right now. I just shared a little bit about the vaccine. That's still very much a kind of unclear rollout, but we do know that educators are considered Phase 1B and that Phase 1B starts on Monday, January 25th. So we're hoping to continue to learn more. We're in regular contact with our public health department and again, waiting for more information there. We do know that our employees that are considered 1A, so that's school nurses, speech pathologists, social workers, psychologists, have been able, occupational therapists, physical therapists, for us mostly employed by our special ed co-op, Ladsy, but have had the opportunity to be vaccinated already. So slowly but surely, starting with that process. I know the other thing that we've been keeping a close eye on is just the saliva screening that we've really only just been participating in. It seems like it's been longer, but since all the children returned on January 4th, we did have a pilot of it in December when our staff was in person, but our students were not. Percentage of participation is increasing. I think we all agree that we'd like to see it even greater, we'd like to see it even higher. I certainly share with parents and I know with all of you that teachers feel safer when there are more children participating, and we were discussing that actually teachers are safer when more people are participating. So again, just continuing to get the word out in whatever way we can, hoping for increased participation here in the weeks and months ahead with that. So I did share numbers if people are interested, that's in Board Book and available to anybody who's interested in that. The other just kind of normal thing we're doing, but we won't be doing it in typical fashion, will be our kindergarten registration night, which is scheduled for March 4th. We do anticipate setting that up as a Zoom webinar for all families to come and learn more about kindergarten in District 96 and also to complete registration or certainly be walk through how to complete registration at that time. As in all times, it's helpful for us to really anticipate that kindergarten enrollment number as early as possible for us to plan our staffing. Any questions or comments about any of that from the board? All right, that is, that is it.
All right, thanks Martha. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Let's see, is, there's a motion here. Ah, okay, let's see, could the board secretary read the tonight's consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda includes the minutes of the December 16th closed session, the December 16th regular business meeting, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of December 22nd, 2020, payables pre-list as of January 20th, 2021, and the review of the closed session, closed session minutes from the previous six months.
All right, is there a motion for the board to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barzavi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Clyber?
Aye.
Mr. Behan?
Aye.
Mr. Meller?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next item on the agenda is Riverside Education Councils. Is there any comment from REC this evening?
No, there's not.
Okay, then next are board member comments. Any board member comments this evening? All right, nobody's been to a play or a musical for a while. Oh, well, I guess we'll move on to committee reports. First up is the Policy Committee. Take it away, Dave.
Well, I only have ones to approve later tonight or a little bit, so I'm going to save my time.
All right.
If you want to discuss it now, we can discuss it now, but.
Uh, we'll take it as it comes on the agenda.
All right.
All right. Then next is the Facilities Committee. Joel?
Thank you, Dan. This is a smaller version of the Facilities Committee that, about a week ago, and we have lengthy, lengthy discussions, mostly about the need that we really do, Linda, if you could chime in if you hear anything that's off, what our priorities potentially could be, and the other focus was thoughts about how this will be paid for, and that there's the potential to, of course, look at taking out debt and spreading out the cost of the movement. For right now, the central fire protection is the number one item on the list, and as we discussed last time around, the others are in progress in terms of design and costing, specifically the playground and, sorry, the Hollywood playground, and then also looking at options with regard to the central Hauser campus. And we heard recently from Jim that the grant from the state for the Hauser auditorium improvements has a much longer timeline than we originally thought, and so we've got a little bit more room to determine exactly what we should do there.
I also know, just to add to that, we got a brief update from DLA also after the meeting, and I just wanted to read a few of the things. I said, that's okay, just to guys give you, to give you all an idea of what's going on. Says we're working on the, with the playground consultant to scale back the scope of the Hollywood playground a bit and moving, and they're also moving forward with the repackaging of the addition for rebid for the Hollywood addition. So that's moving forward. The central Hauser sprinklers, our engineers currently putting together their schematic design and performing their survey work. They're doing the same on the architectural side to, to ascertain what ceilings and other architectural work will be impacted, which will all help remesh, refine the budget. So those things are going on. It's, we didn't talk about those specifics in the facility meeting, it was a smaller group, but just wanted to, if you guys can update that those things are moving forward.
All right, all right, thanks Joel and Linda. Next is Education Committee. Sharon?
I have the Director of Teaching and Learning, Angela Bosel, and Martha yesterday, and as Martha mentioned, we discussed, you know, the possibility of extending kind of how much in-person we can do with our Hauser students. Do we add a Wednesday alternating? We currently go every day for the younger students, so we're trying to figure out, is it possible and how would that be done? It's still being looked into, but that's something that we're trying to figure out. And of course, there was an institute day last week for teachers. I know Martha probably knows more details about that, but they're continuing to look at the remote instruction and how they serve students, no matter if they're in person or at home, and trying to make sure that every student's needs are being met. And I really do appreciate the work that they're doing and the willingness of the teachers to learn anything and everything to keep these kids engaged in a trying time. So that's currently what they're working on, and it's also some spring business of there'll be some fast words assessments, math assessments, just little things, reading assessments coming up in the next few weeks for elementary kids, and it's still unknown about the larger assessment scale. We're waiting to hear about that, so that's it.
All right, thanks Sharon. Then next is the Personnel Committee. Joel and Wes.
We have no new comments for tonight, no.
Okay, then next is the Finance Committee.
I don't think, nothing to report.
Okay, well, then that takes us up to old business. The first item under old business is Brookfield Crossing Guard Presentation by Brookfield Village Manager, Tim Wyberg.
So we have Tim here, Mr. Wyberg here on ZOO, I believe, and I see his name there on the screen, now I see him. So we've had a couple conversations here in open session about the request for contribution toward the crossing guards that are related to Hollywood School in the Brookfield, in the Village of Brookfield, and I know the board had some questions, and we thought really it'd be best if you could direct those questions directly to Tim Wyberg, and so we have him joining us here tonight. So I think not a formal presentation from Mr. Wyberg, more of an opportunity to kind of do a Q and A and let, let him respond to things that might be on your minds or questions you have.
Very good.
Anyone have a question?
You want to start maybe with how the request came about, and I know it's something we, that came, I think at the beginning of your and planning for your new fiscal year. I know for us, it's kind of in the middle of the school year. The request for half year, cross next, sharing cross next year, next school year.
Martha, are you talking to me? It's been a little hard time hearing all the.
Sorry, I was just saying, I was just kind of giving an update on how the initial request came in, and maybe if you just want to reiterate that as a starting point?
Absolutely. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry. That's a little odd being on, usually I'm the one in the boardroom at, at board meetings running the show, so it was a little odd being on this side of it. But anyways, thank you very much, good evening. I am Tim Wyberg, I'm the village manager in Brookfield, and real quick, you know, take a step back, village manager, this is kind of a, a subject matter that village managers, we often debate and discuss. Not exactly sure why crossing guards fall typically or oftentimes 100% on a municipal side in terms of our financial support of that. I know my previous job, I was in for 15 years, that village let the cost of crossing guards with our local school district, so that was kind of my status quo was how I would expect crossing guard programs to go. But anyways, I understand there's traditions and understand, when I got to Brookfield, it's one of those things that, that I realized, last, last full year before COVID, the village spent over $105,000 in crossing guards for three school districts. It's yours, District 95 and District 103. And I didn't question it too much, I just kind of asked my finance director, Doug Cooper, you know, why, why does the village pay 100% of this? And he just kind of gave me the, well, that's the way it's always been done type of scenario, so I said, okay. So Martha and I have been talking back and forth about a variety of subjects regarding your district and the village, and I saw an article, or it somehow came to my attention that your district some years ago had, has an agreement with the Village of Riverside to split the expense for crossing guards. And I said, well, that's, that's interesting, and that's appropriate, I would think. So I started having a conversation with Martha about the possibility of entering into a similar type of agreement as you have with the Village of Riverside to split the cost. To me, that is the fairest and most equitable way to handle what really I think is a shared expense. Just to give you an idea of what we're talking about in terms of cost, and I do understand that it's the middle of your fiscal year, for District 96, the, the village's total cost for the full school year was about $14,000, so if we split the cost, we'd be looking at, District 96 would be looking at about a $7,000 annual expense, and then so would the village. So my, I know the next question's going to be, well, what are you doing with the other school districts? It's a fair question. What I would expect to do is, if we can reach an agreement with you all, with your district, I plan on taking that agreement, using it as a template, then in working with the other school districts as well, to try to get a similar equitable type of agreement.
Go ahead, David.
So I, I do have a question, I guess, why, I guess, I understand what you're saying about going to us and then using it as a template, but why don't you go to another district and use them as a template to come to us? Because I know, I know each of these agreements are always going to be a little different, there's going to be some nuance or something along there. I mean, it also sounds like we're about 14% of that. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I just, I feel that Brookfield is singling us out, and I'm just sort of wanting to know, why isn't, why aren't you going after, why aren't you going for one of the larger districts where you're spending far more money?
Valid question. I've got to start somewhere. You already have this as a precedent set up with the Village of Riverside, so I did feel like this was the appropriate place to start. And then, as I said, we, we already have, what I would do with District 95, for instance, we already have a kind of facilities sharing agreement with them. We run some park programs out of their, out of Grove School, out of their gym, we run a couple other programs where we use our facilities. This would, would wrap crossing guards into that agreement and figure out the most equitable way to split out the cost for this. Little different with them, District 103 is a whole different ballgame. We do not have a, a facilities sharing agreement with them, but we would, I would, again, use this as a template and, and start discussions with them similar to what I'm doing with you all. So it's a long way to the way of saying, I had to start somewhere. This seemed like the logical place to start. It's, it's in place already to some degree, so it seemed like the logical area to start.
Dan, did you have something to say? Is that all right?
I was just going to ask her, for, just for clarity's sake, I believe it's, so this essentially is one crossing guard, I think, what, at First Avenue, is that where this is, or where, where is this?
There are, we have, we have three crossing guards for, for District 96. Where they, where they are exactly, I'm not sure in terms of what quarters they're at, but we have three that are designated for 96.
I just had a quick question. I'll try to get closer to the mic if you can hear me. Not really a question, but I, just a comment. I firmly support this cost sharing program. I think it's something that we do in Riverside that I think is important and ensures the safety of our children, so I'm fully supportive of it. I think maybe where some member, board members are having just a difficulty is, if you could be pursuing this with all three districts at the same time, it would just feel a little more comfortable. So for me, while I support the program, I also feel that if you could start those conversations so that we can be aware of that, so we know that it's not going to, the conversation kind of end for a few years till you move to 103 or till you, you know, that's, that's the only hesitation I have a little bit, is if we could just all do this process together, it would, I think it would ease my mind anyway, a little bit, which is kind of what David said, I just wanted to reiterate my point.
Yeah, hi, I'm Sherry Clyber, I come and get a dovetail into what Dan and Linda just said, I, I totally agree, I would like to see three agreements being pursued at the same time, it's an equitable issue, especially being that we are a kind of minority of the resources being used. I will say, I'm not opposed to some sharing, like, I think the Riverside issue came up also because we had some dangerous intersections by train tracks, and it became a really kind of dangerous situation, we wanted to make sure with the village that everything was the way that it should be, with such a kind of a tricky situation out the train, so, you know, I, I would also like to know where these guards are placed, like First Avenue, I totally understand, it's a delicate issue.
I do think it is, I don't know for a fact, so maybe that information, but there's a train open.
You know, I can, I can, I sort of, I know where they are. Well, I know two of them are, I don't know where the third one's at. But one is at Hollywood and by Washington, right across from the school, and then there's one by the train tracks, uh, by Hollywood stop, but I don't know where the third one's at.
And both of those, David, if you can confirm, are pretty busy crossings.
Right.
Like the one on Washington, it's a busy street with a lot of traffic, especially on school drop off and pickup when kids are out.
Yeah, I just think some more information would be helpful for, at least for me on the board, and I personally would like to see three congruent agreements at the same time, so that it's an equitable issue between all of these boards using the resources.
Tim, Joel, Marhol, is your intent that you would, at this point, not putting words in your mouth and not committing to anything, would you be looking at the Village of Riverside agreement as a template in terms of the district provides half of the funding, but the village continues to provide all the training and administration and scheduling, but?
Yeah, that, that's a good point, I should have said that. I, I fully expect that we will, we will continue to be the hiring authority, we will, our police department knows how to find these, we would continue to do all of the things that we're doing now, hiring, training, supervising, all of that would not, would not change. But it's a good, it's a good point, I should have mentioned that.
And to, to Sherry's point, I think, I don't, I'm assuming, and this is somewhat just stating a fact, but I'm assuming that if any police agency has defined that a intersection is dangerous, then I don't want to get into the, I, I'm assuming that that's an accurate statement or belief, and we don't need to try and validate the placement of the guards.
I'm sorry, I think, let me see if I understood, are you saying that, were you asking or trying to clarify that if we did have an agreement, we would, the Village of Brookfield would not attempt to alter locations or consolidate locations or anything like that of, of crossing guards?
What I'm saying is that right now, I don't think it is necessary to debate the necessity of the number of guards that you have already provided.
Oh, I, I got, thanks.
It's more just a statement of fact, then.
Right, I was just interested in just laying down, how many are there, where are they? Right, especially those of us that live across First Avenue would be really helpful to know what exactly we're helping pay for.
Yeah, I do know that they won't be on, we won't be doing it on First Avenue, because that's not in the Village limits, that's, that would be Riverside.
It's not.
The Washington area, right, okay.
There's, there's probably, when there is a train track, there's usually one on each side possibly, I know that's how we're set up, there's probably two there, one.
No, there's actually only one there, there's only one there.
Okay.
Are you down directing you to microphone? Do you need?
So Tim can just tell us the facts, we don't have to guess.
Right, I mean, I, I know where the crossing guards are, my kids go to Hollywood, so like, non-COVID years, I know how they walk to school.
There's one at Hollywood in Washington and one at Hollywood and railroad tracks that we have put into the agreement. There is, you know, 50% share, from my understanding, those two crossing guards are dedicated to our school, so with our Riverside, there's one that's split three ways, both of them are split two ways. The calculation I came up with, with your finance person, was $7,200 a year. I don't, I don't think, according to the contracts, I don't think we would change the number of guards without both sides agreeing to, to make sure that's enough.
So you're saying we split one and then two are distinctly for our district?
So these, these two?
Two are dedicated to D96 and one is a split?
These two are, in Brookfield, uh, just for Hollywood. There's seven in Riverside, six of them are 50%.
And I don't, I'm just speaking for myself, I know, like I said earlier, I support this, and I, I think it's important. So for me, it wouldn't, even if District 103 or somebody doesn't want to proceed with it, I still, I don't know if that would change my mind, but I just want to see that being pursued to make sure that it's just equitable, you know? It's not like you have to get, like, for me, it's not that everybody has to agree now to go forward, but it just needs to be moving forward with everybody.
And I understand, I understand that point, I just want to, again, District 95's going to be a little unique, because what we end up with may not be as, as the same agreement that we come with, that we end up with Riverside, only because we already have a facility use sharing agreement with them, and this will be dovetailed into it. So the ledger's a little bit different between the village and District 95, they're already giving us really great access to their new gymnasium at, at Grove School and some other facilities, so this, I can't say that it'll be a similar type of agreement that will strike with Riverside. So I, I understand that the principle of it, I, of course, you want to be treated fairly, so that's why I'm here, is because I want to be, I think the village and, and this should be a cost share between the municipality and the school districts, but the only, 103 will be probably very similar to you, because we do not have any type of facility sharing agreement with them at this, at this point, I just want to clarify.
Right, David.
No, I mean, so I, I appreciate that, and I'm going to sort of concur with, reiterate what Linda said, I mean, fundamentally, I agree with this, I think it's, it's fair and the right thing to do. I mean, but I also look this, look at this as a partnership with Brookfield, and there's, I mean, you just said that you have a facility sharing agreement with District 96. I mean, we've been working with the Brookfield for like, and I, with like Hollywood, we've had run into some roadbell, roadblocks with that, some hurdles with that, specifically surrounding parking, and so maybe what we can do in this, this agreement is, even though we don't, we don't have a cost sharing, we have a facility sharing agreement, but maybe we can tie some. But maybe we can tie somehow parking into this agreement so that we can make sure that we can get it specifically. I'm more and I'm looking at more of the Hollywood at the Brook Zoo parking that the village encouraged us to go look at. And that's only a year to year lease. We don't have a commitment for a thirty year lease that we do with the HCA. And so maybe Brookfield might be open to if the zoo should eventually decide not to renew our parking leases over the course of this thirty years, that the village would then give us street parking, uh, so that we can accommodate our staff.
Yeah, well, as you may or may not know, on on my board meeting agenda on Monday night, I have an ordinance going to the board to create those ten. You requested ten parks.
Right, we right, no, I understand that. And I also understand that it was it was post it was inadvertently left off the agenda last time. I I'm talking about the zoo. I'm talking about the zoo parking. We've got ten spaces with the zoo parking. And but if the zoo doesn't renew that lease, we are going to have ten staff members that aren't going to have places to park. And so I was just wondering if we can just somehow get something maybe in in this agreement with this that would allow us that if the zoo doesn't give us those parking spaces one year, that the village will then in turn give us those parking spaces that we lost at the zoo on the street.
Well, I'm I'm glad to talk about that with with Martha. I I don't know if I don't know if there's enough part. There's not twenty parking spaces, I don't think, available on Hollywood to to handle that. I wasn't here, but parking in that area with with as I'm sure maybe you know with RB years ago was a very contentious issue. The village board is ready to approve the parking arrangement that we've worked out. But I'm I'm perfectly happy to talk. I have conversations about it.
For me, that would go a long way for me.
And I think all of this is a great step towards partnership moving forward, so.
Um, I I guess my my question here is, well, so it sounds like, Jim, you you've been negotiating and there is some degree of control or at least a mutual agreement that is built into what you guys have been discussing. I didn't know if there's anything else, Martha, on our side of things that would be beneficial or that we would like to have as part of that discussion. I sound like you guys have been talking if that were the case, it would be in that agreement.
I think the board had wanted to hear directly from the village manager. So thank you, Tim, again for joining us. And, you know, we did some surveying of what other local school districts are doing. We did find, as you know from the survey, that there are a lot of different agreements. Certainly, cost sharing is not an unusual request. There are different proportions.
Agreements that that villages and school districts seem to have. So I think, you know, I think this is just a continuation of the conversation that the board has been having now. We want to know what other school districts were doing. Obviously, we do have an understanding what the actual costs are and a little more clarity on the actual positions too. So I did not set this up as an action item for tonight. I think this was another piece of information that you wanted to add and we could put it back in on the the February agenda as a likely action item.
Well, I I would say that. Now, I was not on the board when this the original agreement was approved with Riverside. I have to admit, as the time at the time as a private citizen, I did not agree with that. And if I were on the board, I would have voted no. I I do appreciate that the amount of money here is is not a great one. I'd also appreciate the the survey information that we've seen that other districts do pitch in for things like this. So it is not an unusual request. It's still it it still bothers me somewhat. In my mind, this is a public safety issue, not anything to do with education. It is for the benefit of students on the way to school. I I do have some reservations with it. I also agree with what's been said here about is there some way to ensure that other districts are in process? I wonder if it's worth going forward to take one more step. Is it disagreeing that we would be paying for it or we would pitch in our share once all three districts were pitching in?
I think Dan, you raise some very good points. I mean, I do agree this is a primarily a public safety issue. It's something also that's been, you know, traditionally in Brookfield and until the Riverside agreement was was paid for by the village. And I guess the question is, you know, what's changed? What this is it's, you know, was it a public safety issue ten years ago and twenty years ago? And why does it suddenly our villages looking to see these cost sharing agreements? And to be very clear about it, these cost sharing agreements will be irreversible once we agree to this. We're not going back next year and saying, well, how about, you know, how about go back to the old system? So I I do agree that, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but it it is money that's being transferred from education to public safety. And so I do think that I have some some qualms about it as well. So I I agree with the points that Dan raised.
So my only question about when we talk about education versus public safety is those crossing guards would not be there when school is not in session. It is literally for the children to get to school. They they are not crossing adults in the summer. They are not crossing adults on a school holiday. So it is, for me, it is purely a function of getting kids to be educated safely, so.
That could be true. That's true. I agree with that. But that's still that's public safety for a certain segment of our citizens that they should first call to them.
Personally, I agree with Dan and I could see some agreements in writing with the other two districts before we put it to confer.
I would like, I mean, I think it would be a little premature to put this on a for me, personally, as an accident in February. Because, I mean, I think there's a lot of new ones that we need to work out here. I mean, the agreement doesn't have to strictly be cost. We don't need to have to have.
Be a little more creative about this because I do think we need to have something that's equitable and that's going to help our all our students and help the community. So we need to work. I mean, I I wouldn't want to vote on this until I saw an agreement, had a chance to digest it and to review it.
Tim, do you have a sense of when they might you might take agreements to the other districts?
Do I have a sense of, like I said, I haven't.
Because you have agreements to the other districts. That was something that this board is interested in, knowing that you've approached District ninety five or District one oh three. Is there a timeline for that?
No. But I I will pursue it, I mean, very, very quickly, but I can't make any promises or any pronouncements as to when that will be completed.
To Dan's point, I think, um, then this board did approve the agreement with Riverside Police Department. It was rather contentious and there were some very passionate feelings on both sides. Ultimately, that board did choose to put the cost, and that cost is substantially more now granted. There's more students to be served, but I think the equity and just more to summarize, there's a lot of different ways to look at this. I think in the interest of being a partner with the village and looking at our other cost sharing with the Village of Riverside, I think there's certainly a lot of justification to have an agreement in order what we have with the village. And if that helps move other aspects of the district's work along and helps some of the other agreements with the village, that would be appreciated. And I know that it's almost impossible to tie all these things together. So if we have to take the first step, then I'm okay with that. I don't know that it's possible to tie all three agreements together because, like you said, with District ninety five, you have all these sharing. And I don't know that we share all that much with the Village of Riverside and the Rec Department. I mean, they do support supply us with after-school services, but that's, I don't think that much with them in general. We don't do a lot of sharing of our other facilities like the auditorium or anything else. In general, I think things do change, and this is a fair request. I normally I don't like to pay too much extra money for anything, but right now I I see this as a fairly fair request. And you can look at equity in a number of different ways. But if you look at equity in terms of what are we already doing with the Village of Riverside, it fits with that.
Any more questions, uh, Tim? All right. Tim, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty audit.
The FY twenty audit will be presented by Kevin Smith. Kevin's a partner with Peter Casella Companies. They're the audit firm that has prepared the last six audits for Riverside ninety six. And I especially want to thank Kevin and Natalia for completing the audit this year. It was unusually difficult circumstances for auditing as well as most everything else.
Kevin, can you hear us? Kevin, you there?
Kevin, can you hear me?
Please, we get him?
Yeah, that was. No, we can't.
No.
Can you hear me? Oh, you're on record.
And we're not we're not getting you right now, sound wise.
I don't see as, uh.
Can you guys still hear me, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see that again.
He just leaves the room and comes back. Sometimes that just always fixes things. That goes to my kids. I'm sure the phone goes, the phone number that you call in. Do the audio by phone, Don.
Yeah, the 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 audio is available by phone. If you want to dial in, that information is in was in the Zoom link. Right now, you're you don't show I don't show a microphone for your presence.
It looks like he dialed in with his phone number. I'm looking at the chat, so, yeah. He says he can hear us, but he can't. He dialed in with the phone number.
You see the phone number right above?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you can.
Okay, okay, got you. Oh, excuse me, that.
There we go.
All right. Everyone hearing now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, technical difficulties. Yeah, yeah, the microphone on on my computer is 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 out. So I've been calling in with the phone, so I I always got two going on here. I got me on the one screen and the phone on the other, so. Okay, all right. So everyone, obviously, I'm Kevin. I think we've got that figured out now. But, uh, um, so just quickly, you know, every year we like to kind of go over how the audit went, you know, where some numbers ended, things like that. A short presentation and then open up to any questions that you guys may have. Obviously, during fieldwork, you know, as noted, you know, things are obviously a little different with COVID and everything going on. But but fieldwork went well. It actually went very well. You know, all the staff were were a great help. Mahalo even came up to our office in Barrington one day during some prelim work in order to get something going, you know, while the riots and all that kind of stuff was going on down there. So so a big help from that. Fieldwork, like I said, fieldwork went great. Overall, for the audit, there there was no management letter in the current year, which is the same as the prior year. You know, your guys' journal entries year over year essentially are the accrual entries that that have to be made every year to take your guys' books from cash basis to accrual basis. So that that's a common thing that's done every year at the end of the year with you guys being accrual basis for the audit. And obviously, you know, those are all discussed with you guys. You guys have a full understanding of that. It's more of like a timing thing and just having us do those for for purposes of you guys. As far as your accounting standards this year for the report, nothing new this year, so so nothing to be looking out for in the report itself. You know, nothing new like the GAZB sixty eight and seventy five we've had over the last few years. This year was supposed to be GAZB eighty four, which was going to be the fiduciary activity, GAZB, which was essentially going to bring on all the statement of activities, or not statement of activities, the, um, um, activity funds onto the books. That obviously didn't happen this year because of COVID that all got pushed back. So that's going to actually happen next year. So on next year's audit report, you guys will see that happen. Big one to watch out for that's going to come down the road. You got a couple more audits before it happens. But, you know, keep it in the back of your head because some things are going to start needing to be tracked a little differently. But GAZB eighty seven, it's a new lease standard that's going to be coming out that that kind of mirrors some of the FASB standards that have come out. But essentially, what it's going to do is any type of operating lease you guys have, and this is, you know, from what we can tell now, it's going to include things like software as well. It's essentially going to take those as a right to use asset, and it's going to put an asset on the books and then basically a liability, and you're gonna you're essentially going to somewhat depreciate it like you would a capital lease. So so just so you guys are aware of that, obviously, it's not going to affect next year either, and we'll, you know, we'll be talking about that more next year, making sure that you guys have some procedures in place to track that, you know, if it's even going to be material, things like that. Financial highlights overall for the report itself. The numbers you guys are mainly concerned with, numbers you guys see on a regular basis are the funds. It's page nineteen of the report. That's where the you're going to see the ending fund balances for the total funds. For the year, you guys ended a little over thirty million dollars in funds across all the all the different various funds, which which is a decrease of about five point seven million dollars in comparison to last year. But that was obviously expected. You guys had a lot of construction projects going on, and they spent a lot of money out of the capital projects fund. Overall, fund by fund, the Ed Fund ended at about eleven million dollars or a little over about four months of current year expenses. You guys were closer to about ten months of expenses last year. But a a a big portion of those capital projects were all funded with money out of the the Ed Fund. So that's the reason for the big decrease in the Ed Fund. The O N Fund ended at about one point eight five million, which is a little over ten months of expense. That service was at about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is again, a little bit about ten months of expense. Transportation Fund, they're about two point four five million, which is about four years of current expense. Probably a little closer to three and a half in a normal year, but you guys' transportation fund expenses were down due to COVID. You guys obviously had less bus services towards the end of the year as things started shutting down. Either way, that fund is getting a little high, you know, normally, we we like, once you get over two years, we start to say, you know, to wash that fund, and if you guys don't have specific purposes for setting aside those funds, like let's say you were going to buy buses, that would make sense. But if there was no specific purpose, you may want to look at spending that fund down. I R F is is at about one point six five six five million, which is a little over two years. So you're getting kind of on that that borderline there in the I R F fund that may be a fund you guys might consider spending down somewhat. Capital Projects is at ten million, but obviously that's there for a purpose. Don't see any concern there. Tor Fund's at about a million, which is at about nine years of current year expense. So again, this is one that you you guys probably want to take a look at as far as spending that down somewhat. And then the Fire Prevention Fund is is at zero. I mean, that fund essentially isn't used. Overall, you know, funds seem to be in good shape, you know, other than some of them actually being a little high. But I don't see any of a concern where they're too low or you guys could have some any any potential issues there. Next thing we normally like to go over just to bring to attention government-wide financial statements. These are things you guys aren't normally used to looking at on a regular basis at your board meetings. But government-wide financial statements, that's where you're going to bring on your fixed assets, your long-term debt, you know, the the pension liabilities, the O P E V liabilities, things like that get brought onto the books. Ending net position for the government-wide financial statements was a little over forty million, which was about a one point five million dollar increase over the prior year, which is on page fifteen of the report. So you'll see you had an increase there on the government-wide, aside from the big decrease on the fund financials. The main reason for that really is is as you bring these things onto the books, things get taken off the fund financials and brought up into, you know, a balance sheet format. So all the capital expenditures you guys had this year got removed and essentially brought up into a balance sheet line item. So things like that happen, your debt payments, those reduce the debt instead of being shown as an expenditure. So a good spot to look at is page twenty. That gives you a good breakdown of how those differences affect your fund financial statements to get you to the government-wide. That's where I usually point people to 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 see how those differences change that. Again, overall footnote-wise, no real changes from last year. There's no new standards, so footnotes-wise are going to look very. There's, there's no new standards, so footnotes-wise are going to look very similar to past years, other than updated numbers. Um, the only thing that, that, that is different is in subsequent events, which we did with every school district audit this year, is there is a, a little section that just notes that, you know, obviously there's uncertainties surrounding COVID and the, the ultimate impact on COVID as far as finances go is, is undeterminable at this time. So overall, what footnotes will look very similar to how they have in the, in the past years. Other than that, those are the main things I like to hit on every year. Um, so unless anyone has any specific questions, um, that's it for, for my side of the presentation.
Questions?
Have you in your professional work seen any more risk regarding pension costs and shifting? And is that just an unknown question at this point?
Re- really it's an unknown as far as the shift goes, as far as, uh, shifting from the state to you guys. It's, it's really still an unknown. Um, you know, I haven't seen anything recently that shows that i- it's more likely than, than it has been in the past. Um, but as far as, you know, if that happens or not, no, not anything specific.
Thank you.
So I, I have a question. You, you mentioned, and I understand that you, uh, uh, the uncertainties surrounding COVID and the effect on the finances, but do you have any sense on how, what we might be looking at, uh, this coming year, with that especially given sort of the uncertainty in the economy and what have you?
Other than a, a likelihood of increased expenses, whether it's due to be PPE, whether it's due to be additional substitutes to cover, you know, depending on how you guys are going to do a hybrid, um, you know, with, with, um, you know, some remote learning, if some teachers are still going to teach remote while kids are in the class and then they're having to have, you know, you know, an assistant in there to oversee the class. Um, you know, I think most districts are expecting that expenses are going to go up and, and revenues aren't necessarily going to follow those. So, so from that aspect, yeah, um, you know, there, there could definitely be some uncertainties there. Um, but as far as direct revenue effects, um, not, not, not really. I mean, you know, obviously the, you know, the Esther Grant came out, the RISB, um, provided a lot of districts with some additional funds, um, to, to cover some of the stuff as far as the PPE, the additional training, things like that. Not saying that we know for sure what, you know, what Biden might do, but, you know, I could see another round of something like that coming, um, to, to help, um, you know, is, is similar to the, the second rounds of, of, of the stimulus payments. But other than, again, other than, you know, the property taxes, you know, could possibly be affected with some of these things, you know, collections, um, you know, is another thing and that's, but that's not, you know, some, something that we have access to, to see, um, in, until we get, you know, numbers like that from counties. But, um, you know, you guys are a little less affected revenue-wise at, at some villages and things that we deal with. Um, you know, a lot of big sources of their income have to do with income taxes, sales, sales taxes, things like that. Um, this obviously affects them more significantly and in that regard, um, you know, as people continue to spend less or maybe are working less, so you guys have less of a, of an exposure there. Um, but there's definitely some exposure with the, with the property taxes and payments and collections as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Kevin, I, I had a couple of questions. Um, I, I, I heard you say at one point there was a fund that, uh, fund balance you thought was a little high and that we might spend down, but I didn't hear which one you mentioned that it was.
Um, there's, there's a, actually, there's, there's a couple. Um, the, uh, the Transportation Fund, um, you know, it, it's at about four years of this current year's expense right now. Um, like I said, it's, it's probably closer to about three and a half if you look at last year, um, which is, which would have been a year where you guys would have had a full round of actual transportation expenses. Obviously, a lot of those things cut off towards the end of the year. Um, so, so that, that's looking a little high. But again, if you guys, if you guys knew you had some expenditures coming up in future years that you're pulling that a little for, um, you know, maybe that makes a little more sense. Um, so that, you know, that would be more of a discussion on, you know, i- i- if there was something coming down the road that you knew was going to be an outlier year, um, then may, maybe you don't. But, um, you know, just looking at expenses year over year, um, it's, it's getting a little high and it may be something you want to consider maybe reallocating a lot. IRF's right around two years, um, so that, that's getting there. I don't know if it's anything that necessarily needs to be a concern right now, but that's one to watch. Um, and then your, your TORT Fund is, is at about nine years of current year expense. Um, you're sitting at about $1 million and, and your expenses last year have only been about, about $100,000 to $110,000. So again, that, that's one that, that's out there. Um, so I mean, as far as, as looking into, into ways to spend that down or again, possibly reallocating levies.
So Kevin, um, in the last two levies, we started under-leveying, like levying for less than a year's worth as a way to reduce IRF because you can't transfer that.
Right, right.
So, and with, uh, transportation, I think it was getting, it was building up while there was a cap on education. So we would levy as much as we put in education and then, uh, push the rest in, uh, transportation, even though we don't spend it so much there. We usually just spend field trips and, um, special education. So the last two levies, we're, we're going to put less in there than it's going out. So it'll naturally reduce over time. I just got to pay attention. So in a couple of years, we'll put it back up.
Yep, no, that's, that's, that's more than fine. It's, and, and i- if that's the plan, that, that absolutely makes sense. I think usually we just like to bring this, bring this up, um, as, as we get to this, just so, so you guys are aware because there's definitely sometimes, um, you know, this gets, this gets brought up and, and maybe it's not getting watched as closely or, or to the other, the other possibility you could have with some issues is one, once things start getting a little higher, you, you just, you run the risk of having property tax objections. Um, you know, i- i- basically that, that you guys are pooling funds. Um, so, so it, it just seems to be from, from past experience that once you start getting over that two-year threshold is that, that those things become more, more likely than not, than, than i- if you were under that amount. So, so we just always like to bring it to everyone's attention. Um, you know, obviously, like you just said, you guys got a plan in place to reduce that. So, so I mean, that, that's great and I, I think you keep going with that.
Hi, um, sorry, this is your cover. Could you reiterate, um, our, our employee cost benefit analysis in, in the future and how those costs are, I think, projected to increase? And any kind of allocations we should be thinking about?
I'm not really sure I understand. Reiterate from, from the cost benefit aspect of employees, what, what exactly?
I was thinking about benefits and healthcare and, uh, how you were mentioning in the report that, you know, that the increases over year and our number of employees and could you reiterate, um, and did you have any concerns about that over the long term about the number of employees or is it just a mention in the report?
Which, which, I, I guess, I guess I didn't go over anything related to employees. So that's why, are you looking at a specific page within the report itself?
Well, just in the, in the...
In your experience, uh, at auditing on the other districts, have you seen, are you aware of anything that would be pushing, um, health, health insurance?
Right.
Costs, um, quicker than maybe we had projected?
Right, I was just trying to figure out, you know, do you have any suggestions on allocations to maintain what we've got and how do we keep that?
Uh, we're, we're part of the EDC Cooperative, so we're in with over 100 districts. So we've got probably the best, uh, way to spread our risk, um, that's available.
Right, insurance purposes. I mean, that, that's usually, you know, the only way. I mean, if you guys are going to try and go out on your own, um, I mean, you're going to, you, it, it, being in a co-op is, is usually the way to go. So, um, you know, trying to, to pull in your own policy or something like that. I mean, it's just cost benefit analysis, it's going to be, i- it's going to cost more, uh, essentially. So, so from that standpoint, if that, if that's what you're getting at as far as, you know, looking at different plans and things like that, I, no, I don't have any suggestion to do anything different than what you guys are doing now.
Great, yeah, I always thank you. I didn't ask that very well. I was thinking about the cooperative, like how do we maintain what we've got without putting ourselves at more risk and, and how do we continue forward, so? Yeah, yeah. Seems, seems accurate, thank you.
Sorry, Kevin, just, just one last question. Um, I, I'm, I'm wondering, I think you mentioned that, you know, that, that things had to be done differently this year due to COVID, due to, uh, you know, everyone being remote as opposed to doing these things in person. I'm wondering whether any, uh, auditing techniques or any kind of, uh, things that you would normally do in, in a regular year prior to COVID that you weren't able to do this year, given the situation that we're in?
No, no. As far as our procedures, no. I mean, we still, we still did all the same procedures that we, we did. Um, you know, if anything, it, it may have just taken a little longer, um, to, to get some stuff done remotely. So, you know, for example, um, you know, we, we do walkthroughs every year. We go through your guys' internal controls, um, you know, make sure that, you know, certain things are being approved and, you know, that the, the procedures in place are actually happening. Um, you know, usually have a staff member run us through what their procedures are for AP, cash receipts, things like that. Usually that is easier to do in person when you can sit at that person's computer and run through that. They can show you documents, they can show you approvals, um, things like that. Um, you know, a, a lot of places, it was, it was harder to do that, um, but ultimately we still did it. I mean, as far as whether it be through, you know, a Zoom meeting, you know, in this format, a Teams meeting, uh, um, you know, Skype meeting, and, and are able to see, you know, computer screens, things like that, and, you know, have them either send us documents or show us documents via video. So, um, overall, procedures-wise, nothing changed. It was more of just trying to figure out a different way to do it to get the same information that we, we've needed in past years. And, and overall, you know, I would say that, um, you know, that there were a few that we had to do closer to full remote um, than, than in past, but, um, you know, for the most part, we were able to get out to districts um, and, and do most of our procedures, um, as we have in the past. It was usually just, um, you know, trying to get a few things in the office, get those things done, things normally you would do at the client that necessarily wouldn't need to be, um, that, you know, just got done in the office either beforehand or, um, you know, on, on off days. You know, maybe we go down one day and come back another. But overall, procedures-wise, everything was the same.
All right. All right, Kevin, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item is the, uh, 2021, 2022 Official School Calendar, including summer school 2021.
Is there a motion that, that the board approve the 2021, 2022 Official School Calendar as presented?
If we can, I'm going to interrupt on that one.
Okay.
So given that we don't know the details of those sprinkler project, um, and also, uh, real honestly wondering about like any kind of vaccine rollout. We're wondering if we should wait on the approval of, of that one. It would be my recommendation, we'd probably wait. We're not required to submit it yet to the state. It's just something we do as a matter of procedure, trying to bring it forward to the board as soon as possible in the new year. But, um, spring break and, and, uh, winter break next year are likely to, you know, to not change, but maybe the start date of the school year could still change. I know some of my families are just eager to get that winter break, spring break date if they're anticipating any travel or something. So we can certainly share it as a draft, but maybe wait on it as a board action item.
Yeah, I totally appreciate that. I was wondering that too, especially having, I have a child at Central and I was thinking, are they going to, are they going to finish this before the August 30th proposed date? Um, but I was looking at the holidays, they look almost exactly the same, uh, maybe borrowing. We had a four-day weekend this month recently in January. It looks like it'll be three, just little, little things like that. Um, could you talk about the number of institute days in comparing what we normally do? Does it look to be the same?
It's, it's the same. Now, again, that came up as a matter of, uh, even within our teacher contract. They asked to have that, you know, two at the beginning of the year and then two spread out through the year. So again, that, that could change. Those are things we could make a revision. We could take, you know, future board action to revise the calendar. I know we've done that before, but, um, anyway, I, I don't know. I think maybe it would be better to just table it for tonight.
Yeah. But as far as like a parent, I felt like the, you know, just to ease people's minds, it looked very much normal to me, um, especially the conferences and things like that, that everyone wants to know, kind of a schedule. So I don't want to alarm people if we don't, you know, approve it. But, um, I do appreciate waiting until we know about construction and things.
Martha, when is the...
Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
When is the calendar due to the state? It's really not due till, I think, May or June. So we have plenty of time. It's just been a matter of procedure that the board has looked at it in the December-January timeframe.
And that was my question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say as long as, I don't like your idea of posing it as a draft, uh, subject to change, just so that people know. I think your comment saying like the big, uh, winter break, um, Thanksgiving obviously is not going to change. Spring break would probably be the big ones that most people don't want to get on the calendar and, you know, fuck the weather.
And also, I think it's... No, I was just saying, I think it's good to even, even though it's a draft, it's good to see where you, at least, where the thinking is now is the first day of school. I mean, I know that it's subject to change, but at least that's, it's not, uh, you know, people know it's not.
And we changed last, but last year too. I think we pushed it back, what, like three days or something?
I know, we took prior years, years ago, started, you know, the third week of August, you know, and RB even before that. So usually Duffell is, or Duffell is a kind of tailor after RB, but, um, I appreciate if there's construction by now.
Yeah.
I guess my, my suggestion would be that if we, I mean, I might, like...
Just not, not approving this officially tonight, but I would, I would just suggest then that we just wait until the, the, when we have, like right before we have to submit it to the state, just because everything, because there is so much fluctuation, so much uncertainty right now regarding vaccines, construction and what have you. I, I just think we should just, I think this is a good draft. I'd say just just hold off until, uh, we have to submit this.
Sound like there's an objection to that?
No.
All right. Uh, then we shall move to the next agenda item, uh, which is the I A S B Press Plus 106 Policies. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the I A S B Press Policy 106 Policies as presented?
So, second.
All right. Uh, David, did you want to break these out for discussion or what was your thought on that?
Well, I, I, I only just sort of touched on it, it was the last time.
Really, most of these changes are really pretty minor. There's really nothing outside, nothing that I call would be significant, um, in here, though. If anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you, that people might have. But like I said before, most of them were footnote changes, um, and, uh, some of them were just like the five-year, like five-year review, so there isn't, there isn't a lot.
I don't have any questions. No, they, they seem pretty self-explanatory.
All right. Are we ready to vote, uh, on the 106 Policies?
Yes.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Feiber?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, then next is the I A S B Press Plus 106 Policies Recommended for Five-Year Review. Uh, at this time, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the I A S B Press 106 Policies for five-year review as presented?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these? There are two of them, as it appears. Any questions?
No.
No.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Feiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to new business. Uh, first item is Health Life Safety Assessment Vendor Selection Process.
So this is something that we talked about at the January COW meeting. Um, and we, we really don't have any additional update, other than if the board wanted to share some feedback about how you might want to do a vendor selection process. We've done it a little bit differently with Architects. I know with the Lakota-Gawalt-Hamilton Group, I think we did that more in the subcommittee. Uh, with Architects, then we brought all the candidates forward to the full board. So it's again, really a choice of the board. And we can also wait and see when we have at least several names, as you know, Remesh is researching this for us right now.
Yeah, I mean, for me, usually three is a good number. I, I hate to see this one, and, you know, here it is. Uh, it's always nice to hear a couple, but of course, we, that's Remesh to see if he has some reason. It sounds like he has reasonable candidates, so. to see if he has, it sounds like he has reasonable candidates, so.
My assumption was that we, well, whether or not the board would need to agree, like, that Remesh could bring three potential vendors to us, and then we would look at their qualifications or their biographical and marketing materials and then select from there with his input. So, not a huge debate on this. They should all be providing similar services, maybe similarly qualified.
So, have the full board look at all the credentials or potentially even meet, meet them in person?
I
Or over Zoom.
I could leave it to facilities, but I, since I'm on facilities, I don't know that I should be making that recommendation. Facilities could do it, and it would be appropriate, but that's up to the larger board to decide.
Is this a five-year, is this a five-year?
This is the five-year review. This, I, really, this is a firm that should be experienced in costs or lifecycle analysis and inspection, and they should have a resume that shows the work they've done, and then just the general how we feel about them, and if it is an in-person presentation, it could be, or it's just a review of their materials and we select from there, and I would lean pretty heavily on Remesh.
It'd probably be nice to see a little sample of their product, just so we know how to differentiate the difference, but yeah, Remesh's opinions are important.
Is it, is it, is it five-years life safety, or is that, is this focused life safety, or is it, is it anything else other than life safety?
I, I think it's life safety plus the life cycle as well. Just the general five-year facility review with perhaps a little bit more emphasis on the lifecycle that we seem to have fallen a little bit short on with regards to things like the sprinkler system and/or the Halloween chin. I, I think it could easily be done in committee. I, I don't think that this is, I don't think that the differences among the firms that Remesh has researched is going to be all that significant. It should not be, and like he said, these are all, these are people who do this on a regular basis, and, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully the costs will be similar between the vendors.
With the, sort of the non-life safety stuff that was in the TLA report, that I think was begun in February, about three years ago, that was supposed to be a 10-year plan, a 10-year facilities plan. I guess the question, I guess, is that for that part of the project, is there, so we're three years into that 10-year plan, I guess I would like to know exactly what, what this firm would be doing that's different than what we already have. I would be sort of unhappy if we got back a copy of the remaining seven years of that plan. So, it would have to be, to me, something like, we're going to do it, like, much better, or it's going to be totally different, you know what I'm saying? It's not, not, here's the, here's the seven-year you have to go, that's the same thing as already, already have, and, you know, here's a bill for $50,000 or whatever.
Well, right, in my opinion, the sprinkler should have been in the last life safety report.
Well, I, I agree with that on the life safety side, yeah. So, I was focused on that, on life safety, but I, I agree with you, that's the other question I would have for whatever firm you hire, which is, there have been some deficiencies in the current plans, and very serious deficiencies, and how they would have, you know, obviously, it's, it's easy to sort of second guess in hindsight, you say, yeah, we would have, we would have caught that. But, I guess I'd probe a little bit to see, you know, how, how they would have caught something like that, exactly, and what they would have done differently.
Well, part of their work could be, we can, we can, we assign their role. So, part of their role could be, take the DLA plan, and we don't want you to redo it, we want you to review it, and then using your experience, what are other areas that are potentially at risk, and based on our experience already with our facility.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, I think, Joel, because I think you're right. That way we can build on what we already have, rather than starting from scratch and sort of saying, well, just, you know, because I'm just worried that if it's generic, it'll come back very similar, and, and we're not going to learn much, though. But if you, if you can build on it in the way you're proposing, that might be, that might be a sensible, sensible thing to do.
I think it would help me too, if we had a, just to put in there with whatever Remesh gives us, just a reminder of what we paid for the prior, like, life date, what we paid for it, just to see if it even, is it an equitable expense from what we got last time, or what kind of numbers are we talking, or what products, the comparison would be nice.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting concept, almost, almost a consultation of, we've found some egregious errors, and we just need another opinion as to, is there anything else missing, or is there anything else that should be done? That should be cheaper, to your point of, like, total cost. We don't need them to physically come out, redo everything, we just need the gaps filled in, or a reassessment of something potentially or something.
Well, the DLA report was a lot of, a lot of it was an engineering report, so it was like, they hired, and DLA didn't do it, they hired the engineers, they came in and looked at the boilers and said, okay, that just won't serve well, that kind of stuff. I just don't believe that, in that kind of stuff. I would hope that, you know, we know this, they could be, I could be wrong too, but I would hope that, that kind of stuff, you know, they could do a review without having, actually having to
Yeah.
do it again.
Some items, I'm sure, any kind of items, we'll have to look at again, because age and time, time and just
Use, or wear, tear.
Wear and tear have an effect on these things. But, the DLA report where it says, fix this door, paint this room, that's, that just informs Jim's cap, his main O and M plan, and those are things that are already on the list. But, we're worried about the high cost, high-risk items, and that would be more where we want them to focus. But, we can give them that, that mission, that that's what we're hiring them for.
Right, so, certainly, there's risks out there that we, we should be thinking about, that they can see, and deficiencies, that they can see that we're, we're
I'm okay with that.
I think your question was process, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I mean, it sounds to me like if all the boxes are checked and the costs are reasonable, we could either do just a recommendation from committee, I don't know, we need a full-blown interview process with three different companies.
I would 100% agree, as long as the rest of the board is getting all of the documentation, so they can review it themselves to give feedback. I don't think we need a full board presentation by three vendors.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's anything they're going to come and say that's going to change our opinion.
No, but yeah, it's nice, it is nice to keep it up. I fully agree with that.
Yeah, just share out everything we get, but then we can discuss it in committee, you know, and with Remesh.
Ask Remesh questions, yeah, yeah.
That seems
Not on record to talk about.
Yeah, that seems like a more efficient way to handle it.
Yeah, thanks, that helps me, thank you.
Okay. The next item is Strategic Planning Update. I believe that, Martha, we're looking for feedback, or for Wes and I, who are, who've been attending those sessions, who provide feedback to the rest of the board. Wes, what were your thoughts?
Yeah, I was going to say, do you want to kick it off with anything, Martha, or do you want to just jump in?
So, we have had three sessions of our strategic planning so far. The first one was an orientation, and then the next two are made up what we are calling the data retreat. The data retreat is by design, three sessions. We still have one more session of the data retreat yet to come, but I think that's certainly been the most interesting part so far, and I just thought that it'd be great for Wesley and Dan to provide an update. I know, you know, by design, we have two board members participating. I know last time you did strategic planning, all seven board members participated. So, I just, you know, we certainly have a commitment and want to make sure that the full board is fully aware of both process and content pieces that are, that are emerging from the plan. So, again, we're still in early stages, but I think we got some very interesting feedback, and would love to have you share it.
Yeah.
I would just have to say, thanks for all this documentation. It, it's, it was really interesting to read it and, and to see what was being presented and talked about, and just the structure of everything, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, I guess the first thing I was going to say is, I have been following along just to make sure. We, we said that everything was going to be updated on the website, so I've gone out there after the meetings a couple of days later, and all of this stuff is out there on the website. The redesign, I really like, it's right there, it's the own little header, it's got a dropdown every single session that we have, all the documents are in there. So, everything that we have reviewed and discussed or has been presented to us for discussion is all out there for the public. Some of it might not make sense without some of the dialogue around it, but all the charts, graphs, PowerPoints, all that kind of stuff are out there. Yeah, I think, so, just commentary-wise, we, I think Perry's done a really good job facilitating it. It is extremely organized, which I think needs to be when you're talking about something so, starting off so intangible, especially with a large diverse group of people. We've got parents and the two of us as board members, staff, a couple of students from the high school that were former students of D96. So, just some of the, some of the small breakout groups that I've been a part of have been really engaging across all of those. The last one, I was involved with the data one, was one of the former students, a principal, a teacher, a parent, and then myself. So, kind of the whole spectrum there, and everybody had opinions to say it was very interesting to hear the feedback from the other sides, and kind of like the call and response type thing, especially from the student. Our adult perspective of social media was very interesting to her, and her perspective of how she felt was very enlightening to me as well. So, it's been very, very good to be a part of that. And then just the overall presentations that we had of the, I guess it was the, like, current state essentially, so like our math scores, reading scores, all that stuff was really good. Angela did a great job presenting that out. There was a lot of good engagement from non-District 96 employees around some of that data as well. So, I think so far, it's just been, we're, we're very early in on it. As Martha mentioned, we've got one more session for the data retreat, so it's supposed to be six hours in one day, but spread two hours over three days, which, just kind of thinking about that and being involved myself in all-day or multi-day sessions, whether you're in person or not, they're very long, it's a lot of information, it's, it can be sometimes hard to digest and break down in the moment, and you walk away, and you're like, oh, I should have said that, or whatever. So, I, I think this has been really nice, that you get two hours of information, dialogue, whatever, you can kind of think on, at least this is how I'm doing, reflecting on it, thinking about it, taking the feedback, coming back a little bit more refreshed, prepared for the next ones. Hopefully, other people are feeling the same way, but looking forward to the, the third one, and then we got the vision, so it's going to be very interesting, being engaged in all these different perspectives of what we could do. But, the, a lot of the data aggregation in there from the, the last one, I thought was very interesting, as I'm reading, I think there was six total groups, and all of the groups seemed to touch on probably three or four very common themes around technology, social media, just how the world is changing, the math scores, catch-up, COVID, like, there's just a lot of similarity in, in some of the bulleted comments and everything. So, it seems like we're moving really in the right direction and, and getting good value out of it so far, good engagement out of it so far, and hopefully we'll have a great five-year vision that, that we can execute on. It's probably not going to be too dramatically different than where we are, just updated for current times and where we think the future is going to go. So, that, that's my perspective so far.
I was just curious, like, I've been on those and for a couple of different districts, and were there any big surprises, like, people said, oh, I have no idea about such and such, I just figured if they're going, wow, when you looked at the data, was it all pretty much expected? Because I know they do think about presenting, usually our parents are pretty well there about how we're doing.
I don't think there's
I would say, for the most part, we're, we're still pretty early into the process. I, I can't really think of any, any wow moment, like you mentioned, although, I mean, a, a lot of the, the data that was presented at our last session, it's things that we've, we've seen as members of the board before, you know, a little bit more updated for, for folks in the public. But, it's, it's, I, I can't think of a moment that's been a wow, other than maybe I would say, I've, I've said wow to some of the comments that, that have come from, from some of the staff and, and some of the parents. Again, they definitely surprise you in terms of how informed they are in, in the insightful questions that they come up with, and, and, yeah, it's, it's definitely a great thing to participate in so far.
So, I agree about the six hours, we're getting some of those, and it can, can be a little dizzying afterwards. So, I appreciate that Perry separated them, but
It, it does have that benefit, yes. As, as Wes mentioned, it's six hours one day versus three, two hours broken up over three days. It, it does give you a little bit more chance to reflect, it does make it a little bit more of a bite size. It is, it is a daunting schedule that we've got in terms of the number of, of sessions left ahead of us, I guess that's the downside of it. It was, for the first time when we did the two days back-to-back, I was kind of fearing that, you know, we just visited this the day before, what's it going to be like on day two, but they were different enough in themes, you know, for the, the first of the two-day sessions was much more breakdown groups. There were a couple of teachers in my group, and it was definitely great to have that individual or smaller group discussion, there we go. And then the second day was, was much more presentation. So, it was good enough, you know, kind of hit you, hit your brain in different spots each day. So, that was, that helped it go better, and I agree, I think Perry's doing a very good job facilitating it.
I think the, I was just going to say, to Dan's point, the first day was perceptions, followed by actual. So, there was, I think, the back-to-back there, most of these are not back-to-back, like, two days in a row, they're more spaced out, but having, okay, we go to work for a full day, then we do this two-hour thing, yeah, two days in a row, it made sense why you did it that way. It's like, okay, what do you think is happening? What do you perceive happening? And then here's what your reality is. So, I think it was good to have those back-to-back. Sorry, David.
Go ahead, David.
You know, I, I appreciate, I was looking at pretty good information, I know it was a long process.
I, I guess, I just, I looked, I was looking at the documents, and I was wanting to know if you can explain to me, especially, I was looking at, like, how they're breaking down number of the, sort of the overviews of, like, the strengths and the weaknesses, and challenges and opportunities. Just wondering, can you, under culture, there's, there was a bit of talk about, like, the, under strengths, like, the number of students with disabilities is below the state average, English language learners is below the average, and then under, under challenges, it was talking about number of low-income students has increased, but is still below the state averages. I guess, can, can, you offer a little insight onto why those were sort of considered, like, points of pride, and then opportunities for improvement, or challenges, opportunities for improvement? Because I'm just a little perplexed by how those two fell in those categories. Or if you recall.
What I would say is, the groups were, yeah, the groups were charged with, we went into breakout rooms, and it was described points of pride, and then it was
Describe areas of growth, opportunities for growth, areas of concern. And I think it's a matter of perspective, as, as Wes was sharing, the first session was all about perception, and then there was feedback specific to data. So, again, I think there is varying perception on what might be a strength and what might be an area of need, or if something is a strength, how to make it even better potentially, if that, if that makes sense. So, again, it was, in terms of which column it fell in, I think there were more issues of, of note for both good and bad. And now, that's what the next session will be, is creating a SWOT analysis, and I know Perry had shared that, that's something that then we would bring directly to the board, so you'd see it kind of in that area of, you know, I think one of the things we'll still decipher, is, is that really a strength, or is that really more of a need, or is it truly both? So, so I think it's a good, a good question, David, a good observation, and it's, it's not entirely crystal, crystal clear. It may have been different groups had different views on that.
Yeah, so that, that exercise was, was before we had the data. So, that's just go into breakout rooms, what do you think are opportunities, and what do you think are strengths? And it was just purely, right now, what do you think? And then the second day was, here's your actual data, which was unrelated to those conversations. So, I presume session number three will be putting those two things together. So, I don't really have a direct answer for you, other than that's just the random feedback from 36 people or whatever's on the committee, broken up into six different groups.
I, I just have a minor question. You know how we do those five essential surveys for the, each school? Just a COVID question, are we going to be going through that this year? Because I know the data is mentioned, we have it to look past, but how will the team look at something like that if we can't access the data? Is it just for, whenever we return, we'll, we'll put that together? It's a minor point, I was just curious.
Yeah, my understanding is we'll be doing the five essentials this year again. I think, I think we'll have to take it with a grain of salt, but this was done during our very, very unusual school year.
Right, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you that that's, that's one of the things I wonder about, if it will emerge through strategic planning, is this idea of a culture survey, climate and culture survey. I think particularly coming from maybe the teaching staff and the administrators, too, is, is there something better out there that does a better job of assessing District 96's strengths and weaknesses, areas to grow? So even though five essentials is a requirement, you can either supplement, or there are some surveys that are actually allowable alternates, and I think that's something that perhaps this, you know, we, I think we've been talking about for a while, is five essentials the best match?
Yeah, especially with the way, I know I talked to Angela about this, about the way that the questions are even worded, or, or how the choices are presented to staff and other people. I was just curious, what do we do with something like that? And maybe we do supplement, especially in a special year, how do we really get a better picture of what's happened, and how to move forward? So, thank you for thinking about it ahead of time, so.
Yeah, and Angela did a really good job in going into
Yeah.
Way more depth than I think we've had done
Yes.
Public side of, like, break, like, I was, I was writing various things, like, oh, I don't
Being a curriculum and teaching learning person is, is mind-dizzying, all the amount of data they have to look at, and jargon, and acronyms, and, so.
The fact that only twenty percent of the population has to respond is
Yes.
Not large, so. Any, I guess for, anyone that did look through any of this, any other feedback or anything that Dan and I should keep our ears open for, any, I don't know, any personal notes that you guys want brought to the table?
I don't have any personal notes, but, and it's, it sounds like what I'm about to say is not true, so just, if at any point in the process, we're trusting you guys to, like, feel like, if the Zoom COVID thing is not feeling like this is the best way to do it, just, just make sure we're being honest about that, because I know we, some of us have concerns about, is this the best time to do a strategic plan over Zoom, and, and I, so if you're ever getting to the point where you feel like, wow, I think this would be more robust if we went in person, then
Yeah.
Just, just be cognizant of that, but I, it sounds like from what's going on, that's not happening.
Yeah, I, I expressed that concern
Yeah.
When we approved it, and, or, as we were talking about it. So far, I, I haven't seen a problem to be, to be concerned. It's run well, it, it's been going well. We're early in the process, but
Yeah.
I'm feeling good about it so far.
Yeah, and from what you guys are saying, it sounds like it's going great. I just wanna make sure that, like, if we feel like we get to a point where just like, we need to pause because this isn't working, I just wanna make sure we can be, you know, honest with ourselves about it.
Yeah, that's, at least from my perspective, when I express those ideas, that probably
has much more to do with the attention of the administration, and does the administration have time to participate? And I think the answer, they do this so far, is they have time for now, so.
And it really feels like a priority, the administrative team participating, and I know, you know, Angela, Don, Jim, and Pam spent a lot of time creating those data reports. Some of it was what the board has already heard, but they were a bit, bit more detailed.
Yeah, they were great.
Very focused for that, and so certainly wanna thank them, I wanna thank Dan and Wesley for being part of it. And I will just say anecdotally, the one part I miss being on Zoom are those sidebar conversations you get to have, the conversation you might have at lunch, or the conversation you might have walking in or walking out of the room. There's just so much feedback being presented, and I think just a really great group of parents and community members and staff, too. Staff certainly have those opportunities, maybe have those additional conversations, but a lot of community members, you see them two hours on Zoom, and then we hit, you know, leave meeting, and, and it's over. And you were, it's a really great conversation, so it was kind of operate at time.
I guess the only thing that I would ask, and I know you guys will do this, is just, we might have new education department issues that come up with funding, and all kinds of things. I would just ask that, of course, like, the committee be appraised of any changes or any options that we have that might be different, or how we come back next year, and anything that's possible that we didn't know was possible, and I'm sure you'll be doing that, but, just, and I appreciate the financial report, too, from Jim, and, yeah, any kind of facilities payment help would be amazing, if there's some awesome options that people come up with in the committee, I'd love to know.
I was gonna say, is that how much of strategic plan is trying to find money?
Try and find some money.
That'd be great.
We can introduce a collection in the end, in the session room.
Yeah, but you're right, I just looked on the website just to check, and it is great that all of those options are right there.
Yes.
So user-friendly, so.
Yeah, and the presentations were very clear, too, like, the dialogue is really what supplements the pictures, the charts, all that kind of stuff, but they, I, I think all the, the reports were done really well, presented some really good information. And just to your point on the not getting good engagement, I mean, being somebody that my life, you know, my entire work life has been virtual meetings for the last almost four years now, like, these three meetings I've been involved in have been far more engaging than probably ninety percent of the meetings I've had in my work life. So, like, so far, it's been pretty good.
That's pretty high, right?
But insurance is so exciting.
And then, you know, and some of it is just getting the right people.
I'm a teaser.
And when you do have large groups of people, thirty-plus, I don't remember how many total people are on here, you're not gonna get everybody participating in those large, but I mean, we had, I don't know, I, I stopped tracking names. Like, I try to, as I facilitate a lot of these, I try to pay attention to who's speaking, who's not. There was a pretty good portion, in my opinion, that was chiming in, IM-ing questions in, so that they weren't talking over people. We really have not had a lot of common, what I would call like, common problems with virtual meetings so far, so.
And it's definitely, participation has been great, and, yeah, you, you don't see people, you know, in, in some other contexts where you have people dialing in, and you never see their, you never see their
Their cameras off?
Take off mute. You wonder, are they there? They're definitely, everybody's there, everybody's engaged.
Yeah, well, that's great, and thank you to everybody who's doing that.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Really great insights from the staff, too, about some really, like, pointed information and stuff, so it's, it's been very, it's been very
Yeah, I think that's one of my favorite parts, is to hear what they're doing.
Yeah.
But, yeah. And the parents, too, though, you know, every, every school has its own vibe and their own community, so it is neat to hear from other parents that don't, that you don't see every day. I think that's valuable.
I personally can't wait for my next breakout session. That was, that was the night where we did those, that was just amazing, amazing amount of information, amazing to hear from people from different perspectives you hadn't heard from before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim was there, too, so, you know, Jim's always a hoot.
He is a hoot.
He's already checked that.
I think it really speaks to how engaged this community is, it's something I know, I've, I've said all along, I know you all know that as board members, but truly, just people jumping in, participating, busy people that carve time out of their, you know, busy lives with children and work and everything else to, to make time to have these conversations, so it's great.
If anything else pops up, email Dan and I, we'll make sure we leave it somehow somewhere.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on. Is there any public comment that's
There is not.
There is not?
Yep.
We're heading too early tonight, aren't we? Okay.
I almost said that before the meeting started, like, this shouldn't have been a public, I didn't.
Don't do it.
I didn't do it.
Uh, future meeting day, it's February 3rd, committee, the whole, 7:00 PM at Hollywood School. February 17th, 2020, going, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, in the multipurpose room at Ames. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.